You know, I've never prayed the rosaries. Well, I've always prayed it in the morning and night. I've always sleep every night with it now. Yeah, which I love.
It's very comforting.
Yeah, I'm on the favorable for the last fifteen years and I had. He was his life. Nice conversation. And he said, I can tell you're.
No, it's your only counsel.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have any.
Good morning.
I'm left handed here. Then you put my right hand. What are you? You're trying to screw me up.
What's going on? It's got traffic so backed up on make. Just before you come in.
You looked at the one. That has the auction. You think it's only down to one of the auctions?
Hi Pete. You look good this morning.
Ready? Ron, are we ready? Are we live?
Good morning, everyone. Today is September the 11th. It's not AM. I'd like to call the order to Spokane County Planning Commission. The public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our web link and telephone conference links. Star nine to raise hand, star six to speak. Individuals are limited to one three minute comment period for any item. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda items. Chat is not supported. And as a custom of the commission, we introduce ourselves before we start any formal business. To my right, Logan, you want to start off?
Logan Camporielli.
Melissa Whitstruck.
Bonnie Edwards, and I'd also like to take a moment of silence for everybody that was part of September 11th, twenty seven years ago.
Wayne Brokaw.
Clyde Hossi.
Pete Rayner.
Stephen Puller, Chairman. I've been to Ground Zero. I've been to that museum. Uh, it's pretty daunting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Totally trivial. I was in the air in an airplane that morning at six thirty.
Oh, my. Oh, my gosh.
In one of those that was diverted. We were headed from Colorado Springs toward Chicago. We actually got to O'Hare instead of being down in Kansas somewhere. But when I got to O'Hare, you couldn't believe the planes that were scattered all over the place. I got the last car in the north in the National Car Rental Lot, so I could go up to Madison time, home base, but. I was in the morning. I was in the air that morning and Chicago was thinking it was the next target. The the Metro Train folks had turned around all of the suburban commuter trains and were running them out of the city as loaded as fast as they could because they thought the Sears Tower was going to be next.
Whoa.
I remember it very well.
Okay, with that being said, the first order of business, this is the part of our agenda where we invite the public to comment on any item that is not N O T on this agenda today, which has been published in advance. Would anyone like to come and address the commissioners of the planning commission at this point in time that's not on this on this agenda? That would be the time. I think you need to come up here. Come, come, come on.
Before you start timing me, I would like to identify District Five's planning commission because I live on the West Plains and I have a lot of comments, I believe. Is that Mr. Rayner? No. Who who represents District Five, who apparently is appointed by the county commissioner?
Al French.
I think maybe me. I don't know. No, I think it's Wayne, but I'm not sure.
It's me.
Oh, oh, which planning commissioner? Yeah.
All right. Well, I I'd like to get together with you. Okay. I'd like to glad to identify you and I'd like to have a a one to one personal meeting about the comp plan since you're representing us. Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that. So I'm Julia McHugh. I live in the Palisades neighborhood, basically the east edge of the West Plains. I live on a contaminated well. I live with all kinds of goodies that happen out on the West Plains. I've attended four different meetings of this comp plan. And I can tell you that you absolutely have the cart before the horse. What we need to do before we talk about housing types and arrangements and situation on the geography is to talk about the geography and the underlying problems and issues and vulnerabilities that we have out there on the West Plains. So I basically, you've got this, I hope. I sent this to Ms. Rona and she was going to forward it to you. Uh, because I cannot directly get in touch with you, which is another opaque curtain between yourselves and your constituents who pay the taxes and support this system and probably your breakfast. Pardon?
We're not paid. We're volunteers.
No, but we're supporting this meeting and the all kinds of things. Yep. And so are you. We're all we're all in this together for sure. So I have requested a bunch of answers from Mr. Chesney and the other planning staff and I'm yet to have them. Mr. Chesney will not be surprised by anything I have to say today. He's received this twice. So we the the meetings I've attended, there have there there tagged as place making, but all we've heard about is housing. So in the most recent Zoom meeting, there was no assessment of environmental impacts discussed. There was nothing touching on existing environmental conditions, proposed or infrastructure requirements, utility demands, water, sewer, powder, power, broadband, mass transit, waste disposal, stormwater management, road capacities, which are icky, let me tell you. And vehicle trips, demands on fire, police, schools, libraries, parks. None of that has been discussed ahead of, well, here's the housing we want to provide and this is where we think we want to put it. So what are the anticipated demands on county coffers for housing impacts? Where is the update of the critical areas ordinance since we live atop and rely on the critical area, which is the West Plains Aquifer, which many people do not know is separate and distinct from the Spokane Valley Rattam Prairie Aquifer. We have massive PFAS contamination from Fairchild and the airport. The city county co-own this airport and you are going to be co liable for fixing our wells. We have many health problems out there. We have we have lots of problems that this is this process of updating is not beginning to address. Where is the aquifer susceptibility map update? When can residents expect a clear, full discussion of environmental issues for the West Plains and the entire county? How does the comp plan tie in with the many activities of the S three R three solutions? If you know Al French, you know what he's up to. How does the comp plan tie in with the Spokane and Kalispel tribes? They're all out there on the West Plains. How about Fairchild Air Force Base? There are massive presence out there and we bear the brunt of military preparedness. We also bear the brunt of all your garbage. We get the waste of energy. We got the prison. We've got the landfills. We've got the gravel mines. We've got all kinds of goodies dumping like crazy. How does the county proceed with this housing cart before the environmental infrastructure horse? Just a minute. How many citizens attended the Zoom meeting? Can't even see that because I can't get into the Zoom meeting by phone. I'm muted both times. And when is the alternatives presentation to be held at the Sheriff's Training Center, which Mr. Chesney, I believe, has arranged? It's coming, but I don't know the date. And please provide a separate schedule of your dates, place, times of this commission meetings regarding this comp plan. Update because it's us you're about to impact for the next twenty years. And the cart is definitely before the horse. You have no idea, I think, what you're about to do as you approve these various opaque stages on the comp plan. Thank you. Young questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes.
And you are the attorney?
No, not an attorney. I'm this is not a back and forth. Right now I'm I'm not asking you a question. I'm trying to make a comment. So I don't have any questions for you if you'd like to sit down. Um, I'm just trying to make a comment.
Normally the attorney sits in that seat. So sorry for my assumption. You're a planning commission member.
I am. Thanks. Um, I take serious umbrage with this comment here from the public. Uh, most of the items that were mentioned here are are ones that have been discussed on this dais in the last twelve months. So it's pretty ridiculous. I appreciate a public comment, but that that is an uninformed public comment. Thanks.
And it's my my area. I have been to many meetings in our area uh, held at the library in Airway Heights and other places that there've been meetings over the last several years that I've been on this board. And there has been a lot of information provided. We've had a lot of time and talk here. Our director here has done a great job of bringing the public in and we've really expanded, I think, the opportunity for the public to participate. And I I'm sorry that you haven't been able to take advantage of of that over the years, but again, I've been to the Airway Heights Library. I've been to Cheney. I've been to several places where we receive public input. And I don't recall meeting or hearing you speak at any of those. So I'm sorry if you didn't get to. Hopefully you'll be able to get on the calendar for the future meetings as we go forward.
Mr. Chairman? If if I could.
Please.
We I met Julia a while back and I am grateful for the information she's provided to us that will help us provide a better set of planning parameters for your discussion regarding the West Plains. It is far more complex than I imagined when I came back to this position. Uh, and we're we're trying to peel those layers back so we can better understand the differences in the aquifers, the differences in how the paleo channels move water through that area in a very fast way, which means contaminated water gets distributed a lot faster than it would be if it simply infiltrates. There are significant challenges to future development on the West Plains. In addition to those created by people, you know, the PFAS issues, you you all know it's it's scablands. It's pockmarked with wetlands. It's got all sorts of environmental impacts. Uh, we are working on our critical areas ordinance. Uh, we are working through our climate and resiliency element to better understand some of this as well. But I do want to to acknowledge that we've learned a lot from Julia and her team. And I consider that a valuable resource. Uh, we are looking at, as you know, we've created technical advisory committees for several several of our topics. Uh, rural and open space, climate and resiliency and some of those. We're going to create a West Plains Technical Advisory Team with some of the citizens out there as well as our consulting group. So there's a more routine chance for all of us to learn what they know and be able to translate as best we can that information into planning recommendations that we can put before you in the coming months. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that that I share, I I understand the frustrations that are out there. And we're working hard to better bring that information into our into our knowledge base.
If I could, um, I appreciate what you had to say. And 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 I've shared internally those same concerns. Personally, if I don't have a solution, I try to keep my mouth shut sometimes. And and I've had the the frustration is this is a massive problem. We've we've we're at an intersection of what human beings have been doing for thousands of years merging with a lot of bureaucratic regulations and we got to look backwards and we got to look forward. And which direction do we look first? And it's it's a challenge and and so if you're frustrated, I understand I'm frustrated, but I but I I have to. I keep scratching my head thinking, well, how else would we do it? And we're just taking it on as as it comes.
I just want to add to that. I I say thank you for your comments. It's I mean, it's really important. We can't do this job without as many voices and and thoughts as as possible. Having said that, though, I would also like to just remind everybody that we are your neighbors. We live and work here and raise our families here, too. We are Spokane County residents and we are well aware that this is a that's one of the complex areas in Spokane County. There are a lot and the problems that are facing any one area in Spokane County, let alone West Plains, which is very, very difficult. Are the result of years and years and years of decisions that were made by people that were here before us, you know, trying to figure out how to make an economy work, how to make places for people to live. But we are doing the best we can. And we are all volunteers and we all pay taxes here. So I just don't want that to get lost in the conversation, although I understand the felt pain. But you're doing the right thing. You're doing the work and your group, if you belong to an organized group. You're bringing these matters to the attention and getting into the planning process before it's done. these matters to the attention and getting into the planning process before it's done, which is unbelievably important, unbelievably important. Once it's done, it's really hard to unwind. So I thank you so much for your involvement and your input. I really do. But at the other, at the other side of it, I'm saying, we're your neighbors too. We're drinking the water. We're, we're paying the taxes too and we want it to work out as best as we can do with the crystal ball that we have. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one of the, uh, things that we will, we will do for, uh, more explicit public knowledge, uh, you've been aware of generally our planning calendar and which steps are coming and which kind of a sequence and when we're, when we're doing certain things. Uh, I don't think the public has seen that kind of approach. And so when somebody like, uh, Julia says we're the carts before the horse, a lot of it is because they just don't know what's going on behind the wall, so to speak. Uh, so we're going to put together a calendar that shows when we're talking about specific elements like climate, like environment, uh, and then we can start tying those together. So it will at least, uh, it may not make entire sense to somebody that's not in our business, but you'll be able to see we're talking about EIS alternatives today and in October 2nd. We're also, uh, you know, holding these open houses, which are, are somewhat frustrating. Uh, but we'll put that calendar together so that people can look at it and say, okay, yeah, by, by January, this is, they're going to go through all of these topics and we'll be able to, to talk about them. So I think that's, um, that's something from the public that we haven't done as good a job as we might have and we'll correct that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Julia, um, I must apologize to you. 20 years ago, I sat here on this board just like this and the planning commissioner said, the director said, we're going to deal with the GMA. And we sat here and we said, okay, what does that mean? And participation, I can assure you out here in the audience today, which is 12 people, there was zero people interested. They did not become involved. You must compliment yourself and say, pat yourself on the back and say, and you're interested. I did the best I could 20 years ago and tried to lead us forward into this 20 years that we're at the end of. Now, with that being said, you know, I'm old, but I haven't forgotten where we came from and I do believe and I really feel that we know what has kind of happened along the way. We need to find ways to improve upon it and it'll only happen by people like yourself becoming involved because 20 years ago, they didn't. Were you one of them at me?
Um, yeah, we're
Well, yeah, well, there's many a things that, that again, we have improved upon. I feel the next 20 years, we're looking forward to it. Um, I'm the voice of the past. I apologize if we have failed you, but again, with the GMA and with the director and the means of doing government work, we can work at it continuously and thank you for your involvement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I suggest we do move on.
Okay.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? Online? Um, seeing none, let's move on to our, um, to our agenda. We have a workshop today, uh, environmental impact statement update and UGA discussions. Scott Chesney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, today we are going to talk about in, in quite a lot of detail of what's generally called alternative one. Uh, and alternative one, as you've seen in past, in, uh, documents is essentially an infill based, uh, alternative. Alternative two is something, uh, that we were going to be getting you another set of homework, uh, requests after this meeting and that will be, uh, worked on between now and your meeting in October, uh, than on the second. The end of those two meetings will create what we're calling in the EIS analysis bookends. There'll be two ends of, of the spectrum of a range of development and we will under, we generally presume that when the, uh, when we brief the board of commissioners on the third, uh, that, that, that we will narrow that into something that is a little more directive and then that will be part of the study that goes forward. And that study, because it is environmental impact statement, that study will, uh, have extensive use of our critical area ordinance, our shoreline master program, uh, and information we can, we have and can find out about environmental conditions elsewhere in the county, including the West Plains. So this is a way of, of narrowing that level of study and it's, it's really just a practical approach. If, the more things you study, the longer it takes and the more expensive it is. So if we can narrow that a little bit by moving these choices in, uh, it's a better use of our public funds to get a, get some answers. So that's what we have for you today.
Scott, could I ask you a question?
Of course.
Um, is the, is it fair to call alternative one, like is the name of it, I was just making sure I'm following, is placemaking and neighborhoods? That's like the name of alternative one or?
I would suggest the, the nomenclature on this is kind of based in the EIS, uh, conventions where there's an alternative zero, which is
Do not name.
And then usually two action alternatives. We've characterized this as the infill alternative.
Sorry. Okay. This is the infill alternative. Cool. Thank you. Yeah. Um, it's helpful to me to use those names instead of, I mean, I'm fine using alternative one, but it's just helpful to use those names because it helps me like cue my brain for what it is. So this is the infill alternative.
I totally agree.
Okay. Thank you.
We all too often fall back on our, our professional jargon and, and remember that our audience doesn't know the difference between an alternative one and two because they're not very descriptive. And so being more descriptive is helpful. Uh, so what we have here is this, the reason I bring that up, alternative two is the one that will include possible modifications of the urban growth area boundary. Uh, alternative one is looking at how we generally fit within our existing world. Click on that. Not yet. So, uh, again, these are the three alternatives and one is, you know, it's the infill, the other is the UGA adjustments. Uh, and they're pretty, in that sense, they're kind of straightforward. Today's discussion is basically how can we accommodate 100,000 people in the county if we do not change municipal or urban growth area boundaries, uh, but consider developing regulations, uh, exclusively to adjust that. That is true for both the city and the county. Uh, and then, you know, we, this group, we're mostly concerned with the unincorporated, uh, urban growth areas, uh, whereas the cities are taking care of their internal sides separately. However, we have to work together, uh, because if we're looking at a full realm of housing opportunities, it has to consider, you know, downtown high-rise housing all the way out to very, uh, low-density rural development. So these are the two alternatives we're looking at. We're not moving, Rona. Can you just click somewhere on that screen? Here we go. So here's the, uh, we've got the parameter, our, our housing targets you've seen before, roughly 24, 25,000, um, dwelling units. And then we're looking at, uh, essentially the analysis looks at a more traditional rezoning for those smaller sites. And then as we have larger sites, that will be the idea where we're starting to bring in some of our neighborhood development or neighborhood zoning concepts for the future. If you will indulge us for a moment, Mr. Chairman, uh, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Nope.
Scott, could I ask us a technical question? And maybe you were not there yet, but, um, with this packet, we have sort of like, um, current zoning and proposed zoning options for, or sort of comparisons. Will we get the same sort of thing for alternative two, but also thinking about expansion then in that case as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll get a similar set of maps, but tailored to that alternative.
Yes. And, and when we get to alternative two, the, uh, the potential development regs and zoning will be, will include the kind of, the neighborhood classification zoning that we've talked about in the placemaking side of it. Today is looking at the county's current existing zoning categories and how they can change in a small way. Uh, so here's the housing level specifically. You can see the counts at the bottom, 17,000 in the UGA, uh, over 6,000 having to be anticipated in our rural areas. Uh, that's no, you know, small, uh, planning effort either. As you've heard before, uh, we look at primarily the concern from the Growth Management Act and the legislature was to look at those whole potential homeowners or renters who are at 80% of the area's median income or under. Uh, that's, uh, it's a benchmark that is generally accepted, although it's not entirely accurate, but that's sort of the, uh, the, the limit of what would be an affordable income. Uh, and as you'll see as we go on, that's not really the case. None, none of these under 80, uh, produce a truly affordable product without other market factors coming into, into play. But nonetheless, you can see, uh, looking at even in that very low income, zero to 30, uh, you know, there's, there's 5,000 dwelling units that are forecast to be needed in this planning period. So this is a, and this is a new challenge. The last time the county updated its plan, uh, now, you know, almost 10 years ago, all you had to do was provide for affordable housing. It was, that was the entire statement and now it is by income band. So we have to drill down into how can we do this? What we do for this first round is change the development assumptions from, uh, and, and these, what we call these are assumed densities. What that means is, uh, you know, LDR would be up to 10 units an acre, which would very likely result in a net of about six units an acre when it sits built out. And we did that in a sense, the county, to give you some background, Spokane County had, uh, you know, up to six units an acre in LDR until 2020 and the county board raised that to eight, uh, with some, uh, density bonuses from, or duplexes if they were included in a subdivision. Even at moving to eight units over the last four years, our effective built-out densities in single-family detached housing are about four and a half units an acre. So you can, you can talk about the upper limit, but the practical part is going to be somewhat less. And so that's what we're talking about for counting purposes here is six. Medium and high-density residential, pretty much where they normally are, uh, because it's a, first off, it's a different product. You don't have yards. You, you do have multifamily for the most part. And then mixed-use neighborhood, commercial, regional, commercial in our current code all allow for residential development. And so we're saying here are roughly the density, uh, assumptions on some share of the site, not on the entire acreage because of the mix of uses. So what does that look like? Uh, and so in a low-density zone, our current parameters around the left, um, and some of the suggestions for the analysis around the right. Uh, in this case, you know, we, we talked about allowing duplexes on the corner lots. That's what gets you the density bonus in our current zone. One option is looking at the middle housing idea of simply allowing, uh, duplexes or attached single-family homes, um, without limits, uh, that they could go on any place that has a sing, a load, an LDR. Um, there's the nominal, excuse me, increase to 10 dwelling units. Looking at design standards that can help produce a quality development, uh, within a higher density effort. Uh, and, and you have all heard me since I've been here. Uh, density is sometimes a challenging word for people when they hear that. And our experience in, in everything and, and of course, I have a design background. But so I look at it that good design can overcome a lot of barriers on density. You can design things in a very high-quality manner that fit into neighborhoods. And so it's, it's important to realize that density is not something to necessarily be afraid of, but it's something to manage. And so there are a couple of things, you know, lot sizes, coverages, setbacks, uh, and then the, you know, the assumptions, uh, what you saw on that last slide, uh, six units an acre and a kind of a, the, the goal would be a, a split of, uh, what's called the middle housing, which are the attached and duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhouse style structures, as well as traditional single-family units. This is, uh, two examples of what that density looks like at six units an acre on the left. Um, and you can see kind of the caption there. That's a pretty traditional neighborhood, although it has the added, uh, it's essentially courtyard lots behind it. So many of those might've had a large backyard in a, in an earlier subdivision now that the yards have been split and you're building two homes instead of one and an ADU. Uh, but you can achieve, you know, six units an acre by doing that. And that upper, uh, right photo shows what that, you know, secondary or courtyard, uh, access house would look like behind the others. As you push toward nine and 10, uh, lot dimensions shrink and you make, you make much more use out of multi, uh, shared structures. Uh, and we're not saying multifamily at this point. We're saying single-family attached structures, townhomes, multi-flats, uh, stacked flats, uh, that would fit into a situation like that. In the medium density side, and, and by the way, uh, we're, we're laying these out today in this because they want those images to kind of embed themselves in you as we, as Logan alluded to, as we're going to talk later, we've got, uh, areas of study that we're going to look at and we're going to talk about what does, what your comfort level is at various densities going into those. So that's why we have these examples for you. And we're caught again. Okay. Looks like we're back in business. Uh, so back to medium density, um, you can see here six to 15 units an acre, lot sizes, height limits, coverages. Here's, you know, again, the multi-unit attached housing, design standards, increase the max density, which then leaves that assumed at 16 units an acre. Uh, again, a mix of, uh, middle housing and multifamily housing at this point. And we're locked again. Okay. Uh, the images, uh, you can see some single fa, on the left, uh, some single-family detached housing in the lower, uh, left of that photo on the lower right, duplexes, carriage houses, uh, townhouses. You know, the, the range of that middle housing product is pretty well spread through that. Uh, also interestingly, um, th, those are not all on traditional blocks with a grid. Uh, it's put on, uh, grid on the outside streets on the outside, but allowing for open space, trails and other non-motorized, uh, transportation systems within the project itself. As you get to 18 units an acre, now we're into traditional multifamily products, the three-story walk-ups, uh, formal open space, sometimes clubhouse, uh, but it's a, it's a different, I mean, it's a different product because the densities have been moving up. In our current high-density zone, uh, we've got a, you know, 15 units general and then 30 units requiring a conditional use permit. Uh, all of the site design parameters are there. Uh, and then the suggestion is to, if, if we're going to use this and as kind of a clue, um, the, the, the high-density residential is not really a tool for the edge growth in our urban growth areas. This is truly more of an urban form, but we're looking at it to study it to see if it has still some validity within the context of creating these neighborhoods instead of subdivisions. Is there in fact room for something at 30 or 25 units an acre? Uh, and, and we would do that by eliminating the conditional use permit and making it a by right, uh, zone with the parameters included in the zone description itself rather than through a conditional use permit. And that would, you know, here are a couple of examples. One on the left has a, uh, structured parking solution underneath the three-story building. Uh, you can see the lower photos where there's very, there's virtually no open space provided within the product. Uh, so here, you know, proximity to services, amenities, parks is all remote. It's not, uh, it's not a front or backyard or not something contained within it. And then as you move up into And then as you move up into even higher densities, you know, forty some units an acre. Which is not something we're really envisioning, but we wanted to to show that range here to get, to let people know, this is kind of what it looks like at forty units an acre, very intense development. Hardscape surfaces throughout. Parking is either structurally included or in, or or simply put out on the street in some other area. So our two zones that we're looking at. In commercial and mixed use, as we said, also allow for residential development. You can see again on the left our current zoning standards. On the right, really trying to just say, let's create some new design and development standards. That have a mix of uses that encourage residential and small business and shops and the other services and amenities to co-locate. We anticipate in this neighborhood commercial zone a fifty fifty split of residential, non residential. And roughly sixteen units an acre, kind of try and find that sweet spot of what the market. Would want to be with living in some walking proximity to some of these other areas. Excuse me, and then our traditional mixed use zone. Has quite a lot of flexibility for residential development, it's, in the recent past, that's all been multifamily development. And and that would likely continue if we were to use this model. In this case, though, we're in, we're assuming a slightly higher percentage. Again, these, and these are for analytical purposes, these are not recommendations at this stage, this is, these are the numbers we're intending to study. And we want to get, you know, feedback from you today on on what those are going to look like.
Scott, if I may real quick, on the previous slide, it was showing a height limit of thirty five feet, is that any way we could get that raised to maybe thirty eight feet?
Oh, absolutely.
Depending on, you know, if you're trying to keep them at three. Three levels or whatnot, I'm just thinking of snow loads around here and capacities and what roofs can take.
Yeah, we'd like a bonus for a, a gabled roof instead of a flat roof or something like that. I think would be another way to, especially to incentivize the design that you're trying to talk about feeling more appealing at a higher density, which I agree with.
Absolutely, we, we, we put on, you know, we kind of the, what I would call the basic parameters of our current code on the left. We didn't try to address each of them in these slides, but what you're asking for and talking about, absolutely on the table, you know, there's, there's. Yeah, we're, we're working on kind of a blank sheet of paper with, as we look at what we would do in the future.
Are those the kinds of things that would be refined once we settled on an alternative and we're like, okay, we're going with. This or a blend of the alternatives we've settled and then we start working out these sorts of details, is that the flow here? Or is this something we work out now?
There's a, there's a continuum, I think, that that will make sense here. Today, we're talking about what we're calling one alternative, which is like the far left side of this, and then there'll be the far right side of of this plus urban growth area changes. Each of these allows for. A great variety of development parameters to meet. You know, what you recommend as as public, you know, policy analysts or advisors. The trick, though, is not getting too far into the weeds too early. But things, you know, and that's what we're here for today, things that you can identify as priorities. We want to have, you know, recorded, written down and be able to use that to help shape alternative one. And so if, you know, as Lonnie mentioned, if, if the height limit, yes, if, if we're going to allow a mix of uses. You know, a forty or fifty foot height limit is going to make sense, because if you're going to want a. Three floors of living with perhaps a half of a sunken floor for parking underneath it, you're going to need a much higher. Or at least a somewhat higher physical limit. And again, as, as Logan mentioned, those height limits can be. Softened by good design or or other terms, so. But yes.
Another question, Scott, we have in their design standards on multiple, multiple of those, are there currently designed standards? I, I embarrassed to have to ask that, but are there currently designed standards in all of those? Or some of them or no design standards, what's the current situation?
Have design standards, they're mostly used in our P U D functions. And in some commercial functions. But they're not universally applied. In, in one, one version of that would be a form based code that is an entirely designed based code that from top to bottom. Our current zoning code is, is the old, you know, nineteen thirteen Euclidean zoning of separations. We hope to move into that in that neighborhood approach of having design standards that set. Set some development. Parameters and also give builders a set of this is what we're looking to achieve and can you make it pencil out?
Scott, I just have a quick question, because for me. The lines between. Land use and zoning are getting a little blurry. Here, because there's an awful lot of. Zoning information. And I think that for me, at least in my professional capacity. Here's the broad categories that make these zones possible. You can do these, these zones will happen in this land use category. For example, so. I'm kind of trying to figure out when you say, let's not get into the weeds, I'm going. Well, it's a lot like, you know, zoning codes, so. I'm just a little confused.
It, it's a great observation. Melissa, the. The reason we're looking at it this way is when the county updated its zoning, moving into the G M A world. It had a full range of zoning classifications before that in nineteen eighty five, it was updated, and then it was, you know, ported over into G M A. But what the county did was have an almost one on one relationship between a plan classification and a zoning classification. So in, in our world, where you might have a residential plan. And have three or four or more zoning classifications that implement the residential plan concept. Here, there's L D R, L D R, M D R, M D R, H D R, H D R, they are one on one parallel across. So that's why we structured it this way, because that's what we're working with in alternative one. In alternative two. We get to open that up and say, this is our residential approach, we've got, and and if we are doing that, we will create these three or four tools to implement that. So we're headed to what you're, what you're remembering, you know, in a, in a career. But we're starting with the tools that we have, which is this, this one on one relationship.
Could I ask you a workload question, do you already have a good idea of like how much more work one of these alternatives is for staff? Obviously, the do nothing alternatives, like not a lot of work at all. But the other two alternatives, what, are they vastly different amounts of work for staff here? Or are we talking, yes, the alternative one is relatively simple, well, not necessarily simple, but attack a bunch of zoning changes. And alternative two is like rewrite the book.
Yes. Okay, that's, that's a, a little simplified, but yes, that, that's the approach. So we've, we've highlighted some potential study areas for your consideration today. We're going to go through a number of these, north, south, east, west. And look at what those, in this case, zoning changes or or intensity changes might look like on a map. And then take a look at, at aerials and open the discussion to each of you to. Opine on how you think some of those more intense development patterns can be used. So we've got some areas in the north metro, there's actually five on the map, we're not going to hit all of those. There we go. In our, our first study area, and again, I'm, I'm sorry, we're blocking the slide at the top, but it's the rest of it's there. This is along Francis, some of the commercial, currently regional commercial, now moving it into potentially community commercial. And what that would potentially do is, is current zoning on the left, proposed zoning on the right. The dark red is regional commercial on the left, the lilac is the mixed use and neighborhood and the. Kind of salmon color is the neighborhood commercial on the right. And so it would, it would change the zoning. The zoning change would affect a development change that would allow for more intense development. And this is a sample of that corridor. And so you, and what you can see is pretty typical. Post war suburban development with boxes in the middle of a parking field, direct access onto Francis, onto the arterial. And then residential in the background, so. One of our first thoughts is, is what do you see as the advantages or disadvantages of making some of this more intense? And and of course, recognize, we're not talking about a redevelopment plan that would scrape off part of those buildings and start over. But more of an additive plan, what could we do to potentially add? Intensity into these areas as they naturally change and redevelop over time. And Mr. Chairman, we're open, open to discussion.
Anyone have.
Seems from the commissioner.
Yeah.
Move on.
How about reducing parking requirements? Like having. Maximum allowed instead of parking minimums.
It's certainly an option that has been studied and used in other areas, it's, it's no longer an outlier. Parking maximums have been used in. In some pretty intense urban areas, Pasadena, California did that several years ago and and found really good success along Colorado Boulevard, for example. Do.
Big fan of Donald Shoup.
Yes.
Do we have any parking maximum anywhere in the code?
No.
And and none of the zones?
None. None. And, and you know.
I understand the value of this parking lot for these businesses, obviously, but I drive by this parking lot a lot, and it's rarely, if ever. Even close to capacity, so obviously, like, there's other opportunity for development, maybe not residential, but like, you could probably run a whole nother strip of commercial. At the, at the street front or at the block front and still have plenty of parking. And you know, that's already happened kind of on the corner with the gas station there at Monroe and Francis, but. Yeah, interesting, I mean, obviously, it wouldn't impact this site, but looking, looking to the future.
You know, that's, that's exactly the, the opportunities that exist in something like this. And when, when we talk about parking minimums or maximums. The. The huge advantage to simply taking parking requirements out of the code. Is it lets the market, the developer, the builder, the, the user of those sites decide what's the right number that I need for my business? And it doesn't have to meet three per thousand or some, you know, designation that's been studied since the nineteen nineteen's. And so that's, it, it provides a, a market based approach to that. Yes, the use of parking lots for urban development is again widespread. We showed, I think we've showed you maybe a year ago. A project in Madison, Wisconsin, that had a very suburban center, much like that, you know, right at, at Wall. In the middle of this area. Grocery store, department store, a bunch of small shops in the middle of it, big parking field out to the street. It was redeveloped with a row of townhomes on the street. The parking was pushed into a two story structured parking in between, and the mall didn't change at all. It, it didn't have to change its footprint, it didn't have to change its tenants, it, it thrived in the environment, so. Even using the. The form and the land with its, with its current position, you can do a lot of things. To add vitality to, to a suburban project.
It's just an awful lot of hardscape with a lot of stormwater runoff and. Contributes to the urban heat island, which is no fun. If you've ever been out there in the summertime baking. I know structured parking is quite a bit more expensive, but if you can balance it with. Further developments that can be leased out.
Right. It, it, it's. It is, at some point. Market forces have to come to play when you're doing planning, you, you can draw a great picture, but if it can't be built, it's not going to go anywhere. And so, you know, as, as these things go forward, you know, we want to be talking with builders, we want to be talking with shop owners and get a sense of, you know. What would happen if you were to do this kind of thing?
These distance. My opinion.
So this one, the zoning category currently is. R C. Regional commercial, is that right?
Correct.
And it's gonna, it would become.
The suggestion is, is looking at it as a mixed use.
Mixed use.
Generally a mixed use category.
And so the idea is that potentially you could get some residential and. Maybe pair it with some design standards that encourage block front development instead of setback development. What is the net gain of? Housing units based on our calculations from just this change?
We, we haven't done the actual math.
Okay.
But if you looked at that parameter of roughly sixteen units an acre, and those could be stacked flats or townhomes along that. There's probably capacity in there for several dozen units.
Okay.
You know, with, without, without otherwise changing the, the use of the land. And, you know, one last example, and then we'll, we'll move on, because it, it's kind of relevant to what we, what we've been talking about. We had a conversation when I was on the other side of the river with Rosehours. And others on the twenty ninth and Lincoln, or I'm sorry, the Lincoln Heist Shopping Center on twenty ninth and Regal. And it has, you know, topography, it's got all sorts of cool things going on to it, and, you know, it only has really three major property owners, so you can, you can actually deal with it. But Rosehours understood the concept of taking their parking lot and putting homes out on twenty ninth. And Jeff Phillips, the president at the time. We had said, look, does it really matter to you if somebody sees a parking lot or sees a home as long as they can see an entrance and a Rosehauer sign out on twenty ninth? We're not burying the store back or we can't see it. Because it would make no difference at all to us, as long as you could, as long as they know we're here. You know, we, we would willingly, you know, use our parking lot for something to redevelop. And so, you know, there was a kind of a touch point of saying, you know, it's, it's, it's not something to inconvenience a shop owner. The city did the same thing. With the Target project at the Southgate neighborhood. It looks very traditional and suburban. It has the shop buildings pushed up to the street, which is part of the centers and corridors approach. But if you were to measure the scale of the parking lots between there and Target. Each of those is set up for a multifamily building with a twenty thousand square foot footprint. That could go in between the main road going up to the center of Target. So that site was designed to be an urban infill site down the road where you could put in housing on top of parking or do something else. So even when you're building something new, if the market can't do it all at one time. You know, size the pads that are out there so they fit a development pattern of a, you know, a, a multifamily building with a double loaded corridor, for example, so. Lots of tools and techniques to, to take advantage of this.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
As a developer. I'm always asking, how do I, how do I do this, how do I make this happen? And. We're acknowledging that families are getting smaller. They're, they're getting married later, they're having children later. We can't continue sprawling because our costs per mile get out of control, we can't manage them. And we have this concept called condominiums that the friggin legislature won't let us build. And it seems to me that. I, I don't know how we in the planning commission can, can make that known to the legislature, but, I mean. I, I get approached all the time by people who will, can, can, no, I, I can't find a builder that'll build a condo, that'll take on that risk. And so I, it seems to me that, that somewhere in here, we, we need to address, maybe that's part of your plan, addressing hurdles, but how do we? How do we address the, the why we can't do some of this stuff we're talking about?
Yeah, yours is not a lone voice in that, Pete, that's been a conversation I've heard at the legislature for the last, at least three sessions. There just doesn't seem to be the. Will to take it on. Builders universally, Greenstone has a site in Kendall Yards that they've positioned to be a, a, a direct condominium, and they can't build it because that. Liability trail is, is so debilitating for a, a builder and an owner. So if, yes, if, if more and more and more of this comes, if, you know, again, and that's a good point, if. If an organization like Futurewise wants to push us for infill housing and more intense, more dense development housing. Then Futurewise should be one of our partners and saying, we need to fix the condominium law or we can't do this, we can't get to what you think we should do because this tool is in our way. And then, you know, sometimes, you know, in, in development and planning, you sometimes have strange bedfellows, but if, if we had a partnership with. But if, if we had a partnership with Futurewise on, on a specific issue like that, then we've got some, we've got some advocacy from a group that has great credibility, particularly west of the Cascades.
That's the best suggestion I've heard in days.
I don't know if you have any insight in this, but as I remember from my conversations, the industry, insurance industry had quite a lobbying arm, and they don't like condos. And, and actually there are some building standards that I can't remember if it's a one hour firewall or a three hour firewall, but but the insurance industry has, I mean, there are no slouches when it comes to lobbying.
No, it's, it's those opposed to the changes or to what would be, I don't want to get too far into this. The general perception of the condo law is it leaves the liability for errors or even things that wear out so far into the future, and it falls back on the builder. Long after the builder would have sold every unit in the building, sold the common space, have no financial or fee interest in the property anymore, the liability for leaking roofs or leaking parking garage falls back to that builder. And so their insurance companies and the builders, they're saying, how, how could I possibly take on liability when I no longer have an interest in this? Or conversely, what does that do to the price of, of a condominium unit? If I have to build in ten years of depreciation and maintenance on this, now that unit's going to go from a million to maybe two million dollars because I'm going to have to have this reserve fund tucked over here in case something happens. And all of a sudden, the market collapses. So.
We, as a planning commission, could like pass a resolution, not necessarily today, but in the lead up to the legislative session, saying that we supported a change to the condo law. We could forward it to Futurewise and ultimately onto the legislature. We could do something like that to try to advocate if we were in agreement on, on that. Just a thought.
And certainly, at least some of the commissioners are very favorably inclined to, to take on that as well. Commissioner French has been very active because he also sits on the state building code commission. So I, I would think if, if you were to put a resolution like that forward, you might find a, a supportive audience with the board of county commissioners.
That's the second best idea I've heard today.
Well, we're, we're doing our best to earn our pay today, Pete, so. Let's move on though. We've got a, a number of these to go through. And it may be that we, we don't have, we're not going to have a lot of comments on each of them, but we can kind of show you what these look like on the ground. So this is again, North Division Newport Highway and Whitworth University off to the side. A lot of the regional commercial, kind of the default zoning on the west side of Division, moving up right against Whitworth. Again, the same basic concept here is, is take that out and make it a mixed use to provide more opportunities for different and more diverse development in that pattern. And while a lot of these are, are small lots that may not have a lot of extra capacity, once the zoning is in place, then a building owner can decide, well, my building is now forty or fifty years old. Should I spend a lot of money to bring this up to current standards or, or current, or different use, or should I scrape this and build something new? So if you, if you put the development system in place, then over time, you're giving those property owners a choice on how to maintain and operate their buildings, even if they don't necessarily fit the model today. So on one side, this is, that triangle off of Newport Highway is, is right across the highway from Costco, give you a benchmark. But here be, you know, kind of the zoning changes, the regional, all of these changing into a mixed use category. And so that's, you have also seen along Hastings and that stretch of Farwell Road to the north, you have seen at least four or five comprehensive plan amendments in the last three years that moved single family or LDR properties into MDR and HDR. So it's, the market is, is acting in an area and saying it's ready for a higher density or higher and better use, as the realtors call it. And so this is reflecting that and saying, well, rather than simply a, an apartment building that a lot of the neighbors don't like, if you use the mixed use category and now there's enough capacity there, maybe it's an apartment building with a small shop on the first floor or some thing, something that provides an amenity, not just for the site project, but also for the bigger neighborhood. And so here, you know, here would be the zoning change there. You can see the sites looking here and the, the current. There is no official development proposal in our shop for that bigger triangle, but the earlier proposal was for a self-storage. And while that serves a, a clear economic need, there's a lot of it and, and people are renting them. Is, is that really the highest and best use for a traffic corridor that's going to be next to a fifteen hundred unit mixed use neighborhood behind Costco and the neighborhood to the north? So, you know, these are ones where we would want to sit down with property owners and say, have you thought of this opportunity? And the, the presumptive answer is no, because your zoning code, your planning code don't allow it right now. So I can build self-storage here. That's, you know, I can get a return on my investment. If you show me how I can build residential projects in here that have a higher return on that, I will look at doing that. So it's, you know, again, it's, it's talking to the development world in a language they understand. And, you know, many of you know, especially in the business, developers and builders build what they're allowed to build. They, they will build to the code. And if we give that code more flexibility and more direction, sure, it'll have a, a little bit of a pain point to some that have a real, you know, we've, this is our niche. We've done it this way for twenty years. We know how to do this one thing. But others will adapt to that and say, yeah, I can, I can do something different here and provide something unique. Maybe that makes my sales go up, you know, my absorption gets higher because I've got something that nobody else has. So we're comfortable that we're starting down a path and, and of good planning language, but also being able to talk to those who will be actually doing something with this and say, can you, if we do this, can you build it? So any, any thoughts here? And we didn't highlight the Greenstone or the Meadworks project because it's, it's already in the works. The comprehensive plan has been changed to the current mixed use. They produced a development agreement three, four years ago to handle their off-site mitigation stuff. And our latest information from them is they're about to bring in another, the second phase plat for seven hundred new lots. So it's, it's, it's moving forward. So it's, again, this, this is a very active area.
Yeah, again, it would just be so cool to see like that it would stretch into the city too, but it'd be great to have joint planning to just encourage block front development again, especially on the east side of Newport Highway as you go up. It's just, again, massive field of parking lot that is rarely full. That, you know, I'm sure those businesses like to have their parking lot, but I'm sure they'd also love to have some folks who could walk to their businesses as well. It's kind of a, you trade a little bit of parking for some folks who, who can walk right over. Yeah.
There, there was such a trend, you know, in the nineteen sixty's, seventies, even into the eighties of, in, in these suburban shopping areas, the, the shopping centers as they became enclosed, but also the, what we call power centers. And that's, you designed your parking lot for the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So that, you know, when you started having the Christmas crowds, everybody could still see the front door of, of the shop. And so the rest of the year, you're using ten percent, twenty percent of that parking field, but you, you've got it set for the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
And to be fair, it probably is full that day. I'm saying it's never full, but it probably is full that day and a handful of other big shopping days of the year. So, but yeah.
Sure. So.
Yeah, but it's not a great tax base.
No.
Parking lots don't really, either way.
Again, back to that, that reuse of some kind. If, if, if you really need this for that one day, can that be accommodated in some other way with a series of shuttles? Can you, can you have remote? Can you build structured parking and make it pencil out because now you've got development on top of it or next to it? So it's, if, if that's the recipe that we give our investment community, that's what they're going to build. If we show them something else, then they can react to it. And as to joint planning, we're, we, we kind of go in little increments with the city. We've met a couple of times to talk about some interesting areas. We're going to be meeting more formally, particularly on West Plains issues. Because in addition, being good for joint planning, they are the water provider in their big retail service area. And as Julia said, we, we need to understand the differences in the aquifers and the differences in things. And having all of those cities in a joint plan is something that we're working on. You're going to see another version of that at your October second meeting. STA is going to take some time and present a joint effort between city and county on high capacity or high performance transit coming up. Division and this area from the Mead Whitworth area over to, and including what you can see right under the blue okay button on the screen. In part of the Meadworks project is STA's future transit station on the north side. And so that will, you know, that's part of this transit project that you'll see some summary on next time. And, and again, to give you more information about this, across from that is another piece of vacant land. We didn't highlight it here because it's not a legal parcel. It's, it's right of way owned by DOT. But DOT is working with us to create a master development plan for that site that could be a mixed use project in and of itself. We've, we've sort of jokingly said, that's great, but remember you're going to have to have a pedestrian skywalk across Newport Highway to make this thing work. And so build that into the budget. And the reason that's important, among others, that residential development increase on the north side of Newport Highway over these comp plan amendments and this plan amendment is going to be potentially workforce housing for a major medical campus, which will be adjacent to Costco on that vacant land moving up toward the STA station. MultiCare bought forty acres, now a year or so ago, very, very, you know, kind of quietly, but they bought that for, you know, a future medical center. Forty acres is, is, is a lot more than an urgent care. I mean, you can, you can guess that at some point they're thinking this is going to be a fairly major medical complex. Subsequently, I don't know if it was direct, but ten acres of that adjacent to, between that and Costco was sold to Shriners Hospital. So another medical provider, which means not only is there a great new service up here that you don't have to drive even to, you know, Holy Family, but you've got an employment hub. And so you're going to need workforce housing for everybody that's going to be working in this area. So again, this is, there is a lot going on up here in the next five years. So this is a little smaller scale, kind of the historic downtown Mead. Looking at potential changes, in this case, moving into a regional commercial with some mixed use setting in, in these smaller lot areas. And again, this is, this is future thinking in, and, well, again, it's, it's, it's an analysis process. It's what does the math look like if, if these lands are available in part or in total? But if it were to go forward, it would be that setting the tone of saying, you, you could do what you're doing here right now. You can maintain it forever. You can fix it. You can do anything you want. But the new plan and the new regs give you this other opportunity. And so if you want to change that use, you've got that opportunity to do so. So on the south side, Moran Prairie, Glen Rose area, the circles there are Fifty Seventh Avenue. Palouse Highway is the diagonal coming through that. Right in center is Regal Street. And as we talked before, the Lincoln Center project being just up to the north of that, south of the Rockwood Retirement Project. Here totally again, within the county's jurisdiction and some really interesting areas. At Palouse and Fifty Seventh, recently a Dairy Queen Sea Store went in, very traditional suburban project. And probably necessary, you know, ninety degree days, it's nice to have a Dairy Queen nearby. But there's also a lot of what we would call underutilized land in the area. And the lands to the immediate south of that urban growth area boundary are also all urban reserve. So this is an area that has development capacity beyond what it's showing now, both in an infill capacity. You can see community to neighborhood, low density residential to neighborhood, and some to mixed uses.
Scott, could you point out where the new STA facility is here?
Moran Station?
Yeah.
It's, if you can see the top of the bar.
Oh, yeah.
This meeting is recorded.
Yeah.
It's that yellow space right there.
Okay.
Fifty First and Palouse.
Okay. Thank you.
And those of you that have been up here, you've, you also know there's enormous amount of multifamily housing that's been built in this area in the last ten years or so, both in the city and in the urban growth areas. And so, you know, from, again, that, the old axiom of retail following rooftops, there's a lot of, there's a lot of buying power here. And this, you know, having that transit station, having other stuff, this is a good candidate for higher intensity development. And so this is looking at it a little bit differently, really looking west here from Fifty Seventh. But you can see the Dairy Queen Sea Station or Sea Store. There you can see the park and ride up there. And the intermediate uses, self-storage again, which is good economics at the time, but if you think of self-storage as a land holding capacity too, it's also something that's very easy to move out if you, you know, if you, if you tell your tenants they've got, you know, some horizon on that. So West Plains. Multiple areas out here and in some that have, have had the, you know, those, those horrendous challenges for stormwater management that were, you know, not anticipated by the builders clearly and probably not well mapped when somebody looks to, you know, look for land constraints. So, and this is, this is one of those areas. Chad Pritchard, Professor Chad Pritchard at Eastern is working on a store, on a water, contaminated water study for the greater West Plains area. We've met with him a couple of times. And he's been instrumental in providing some mapping for us that you'll see here in the near future. But one thing that I learned is the aquifer structure on the West Plains is very different than the Spokane Valley Reston Prairie Aquifer. It's multiple tiered. It's got two major tiers that are out there. And then it has these paleo channels that run kind of across the top of it to the north that were scoured out by the Great Missoula floods ten thousand years ago. And when they scoured that out, over time, they filled in with cobbles and, you know, gravel, but that means water can move through them very, very easily and quickly. And so we're learning what's going on out here. And the, the thing about the aquifers is what Pritchard calls basement rock, which is the lowest level of, or the, essentially when the, the water percolates down, it hits that top of that piece. That basement rock is very, excuse me, very close to the surface in these areas. So one of the reasons that stormwater management is so difficult out here is water can't infiltrate. It doesn't percolate. It hits, it hits that basalt layer, you know, very, if not almost on the surface, very much close to it. And so it's a, it's a physical limitation that no amount of market is ever going to come up with, thanks, Rhonda, the ability to blast that out and, and make something of it. We have to work around it. In some cases, there may end up being no build areas or they're going to have to be open space areas in some cases.
Scott, that's blue basalt. That's the hardest. I mean, it's not your porous little basalt pieces. It's
It, it's
It's hard.
It's the aquifer rock itself.
Yeah.
It's, it's, and I, I'm, I'm learning enough to be dangerous on that, but it's, it's very intimidating to see that, that, that huge limitation is there for development because you just can't work around it. So this, what you, what you may have seen going on right about where the number one is on that map was roughly the nine holes of the Fairways Golf Course that were out there. And those have been plotted for single and multifamily development over the last few years. The owner of the course had a potential amendment for the rest of the course to come in as a multifamily project a year ago in twenty four. We advised them that we would be better off to consider changes in the twenty six plan in a bigger context. That was also before I learned a lot about what was going on in the West Plains. And so the other, there were two challenges there. One is, you know, one is it's, it's a piece of land owned and the owner has a right to do something with the land that he chooses to do with that. On the other hand, every home around the outside of that bought their home thinking they were looking at a golf course. And now it's going to be a multifamily project with potentially garages around the perimeter of it. So is that changing the character of the community? Absolutely. And what role do we play in that? In our current rules, if you change it to that kind of zoning, it's allowed, it could happen. And, you know, back to Logan, we don't have the design standards to really try to say, how do you fit this into the project? So that's, you know, it's off the table for now, but what we're reflecting is if that's going to happen, then you know, this is, this is kind of that concept of the neighborhood zone. Let's put a mixed use or in a, a services amenities, something right in the middle of, of a residential neighborhood that doesn't just have to go up to the highway oriented, you know, Sea Store and stuff up, up at I ninety. But make it a neighborhood, a neighborhood store or a neighborhood area. And what you can maybe be able to see the maps a little light. The ten acres immediately south of that, the county is currently building a regional park, which is also sorely lacking for West Plains development. That was funded through the ARP and so it's, it, it really got a fast track. The land was acquired and that park will be constructed between now and twenty six. So it'll come online just as this comprehensive plan is coming together. This is one, in a way, we talked with you about some of this a couple of years ago. It's kind of a map cleanup part of it, but it's also reflecting that if we're going to do that, let's look at it in a more deliberative fashion. What you see, again, there have been some comprehensive plan amendments. The Lilac, north of Hallet Road, especially on the west side, the, the big open square is Cheney School. And next to that, the two golden parcels were a comp plan amendment to move to medium density residential a couple of years ago. And that now we were thinking, let's make the whole thing a, a neighborhood commercial and let it evolve in a different way. The other parts that are in Lilac on the left are, on the, on the right side, it's the Aspen Park subdivision. That's, those are remnants that were plotted in, in the two thousand five to two thousand seven era when single family residential was allowed in the light industrial zone. The county authorized that in two thousand five and then rescinded in somewhere in late two thousand seven. But there are some of these fragments that are inaccurately zoned. And at the very least, we want to bring them back into a current zone for their own, their own protection. You know, clear title, the ability to, you know, to rebuild and to sell in something or accessory uses that would be allowed in an LDR, but not allowed in light industrial. So it's a, it's, it's kind of a protection effort as well. And here you can see those parcels. You can clearly see the school on this one. And again, vacant land that if it's carefully planned and with, with design and development standards, you know, these are the areas where you can create something of a neighborhood instead of just a subdivision. With that one, you know, big caveat of can it drain? You know, can, can we actually build here without some massive stormwater retention or detention facilities?
And Professor Pritchard thinks or is in the process of map, being able to map what he thinks is an accurate representation of where that water can infiltrate and where it cannot?
Yes, he's working on a, a study sponsored by Department of Ecology. And it's been going on for, I don't know, at least a year or so. He's going to be presenting some of his preliminary conclusions in the next week or so. And so we'll be able to have that information for you for the October meeting as well.
Go EGS.
So with that, oh, one last one, kind of a small one. This is on the northern part. That's the Highway Two Garden Springs interchange. And, and here's something where you've got a chance to move a parcel from a low density parcel into a potentially mixed use. Another area that has no real services and amenities to it, you got to drive to, you know, airway heist for groceries or down to Rose Hours to, to, you know, to get toilet paper for the most part. And then that smaller one, it's, it's labeled neighborhood commercial on the right, but that would be more of a, that would be one of the few candidates that would be a good MDR or maybe an HDR capacity out there. So small stuff. You can see what's infilled around it, the patterns of development that are already there. So again, there's, there's market existing, Assembly and Garden Springs Road is fairly good for access. So a mixed use project could be feasible here. And then finally out, a couple of things in the valley. Again, you can see I ninety cutting through the middle of the slide, Salty's Flats on the bottom over on the right. Here's an area off of thirty second that is essentially, again, like most of the valley, it started its life as farmland and has been slowly evolving into, you know, going, growing crops of homes instead of wheat and dry lands. Some of this has been planned before on the slide on, on the left side image, the commercial at the corner of thirty second and twenty seven already exists as a sea store. So it has that presence in place. The tan you processed or recommended a multifamily change to that comp plan amendment a couple of years ago to complete that as a multifamily project. And there's, you know, there's other development patterns here. We're leaving what's already known in place, but we're suggesting that maybe there's a chance for this site over at thirty second and Adams to be that a, a second part of a mixed use or another operation where, where it could serve a broader neighborhood. And certainly an emerging neighborhood. There's a lot, and you can also see north of thirty second, west of Adams is one of those patterns of five acre lots that, that platted, you know, long ago. Will that change in the short term? Probably not, but is, if, if there's enough development pressure, those property owners will, will have to make an economic calculation at some point in their lives. Just like, do I, do I try to rebuild this? Do I give it to my kids or do I find a way to, to redevelop this in some capacity? Looking at it a little more separately on this side. And then one, kind of an interesting opportunity. Pete knows this site very well. Off of Sprague, the high school that's gone in and, and what you can see on the left side is the remnants of the gun club that sold the property for the high school. There's, you know, the industrial site on there that's, that's in a current neighborhood. Again, no intention of moving anything. But if you're looking at the future and can provide plan direction and development regs that would allow for a more mixed or a more intense use. You know, why, why wouldn't you take advantage of having some of that perhaps next to a high school or, or within a neighborhood? So even though we, we look at planning often at the 50,000 foot level, when you really get down and find some of these small, smaller parcels, you can look at them and go, there's, there's opportunity here to do something else if the rules would only allow it. And so that's the discussion that we, we're, we're starting with all of you today. And so we'll, we'll do that. Let me go to the next slide. Just to make sure we let, if nothing else, Julia, though, this is the slide on when all of the, the next four sessions are going to be here. And these sessions are going to be predominantly this presentation with increasing knowledge that we get as we work on our critical areas and other things that we can bring out. And then particularly on West Plains, we're going to try to incorporate, sorry, we're going to try to incorporate Chad Pritchard's work on mapping and aquifer protection and those things. So that one is October twenty third, five thirty at the Sheriff's Training Center. And then you can see the others here as well. We would encourage you to attend one or more of these in your area. We have made provisions for that. Rona has carefully noticed that if there, if you are there, there may be a quorum present, but there's no action that would be taken or requested. And we will also invite our county commissioners to attend if they choose to these. So those are, are going out and, and when I say it'll be largely this presentation, it'll be this plus the alternative two that you'll be discussing October second, and we'll have that package then to go out in the end of October for all of these. So.
And those are all at the same time. Yeah, Scott?
All at five thirty on different days. With that, we are open to questions, comments from you or Mr. Chair, if you want to take questions from the public or comments. You know, this is not a public hearing. We're not asking for action, but you are welcome to solicit information and comment wherever you'd like.
The floor is open. They would like to make a comment, questions?
I just wanted to confirm, Scott, was there no, no calculations were done to figure out what we think this will result in yet, or what, what the potential increase in units from these proposed changes would result in? Is that right?
Yeah, on a, on a site specific case, that's accurate.
Okay, but on a large scale, have we done that? Like the collective changes?
The collective change is done. Alternative one would suggest that the county can in fact absorb all 24,000 units in its current urban growth area if you adopt some or all of these density increases. The public policy question is, is that level of density increase desirable? Will the market respond to that? Or are we trying to? Or, or is it a market constraint that we need to address in a different way? And that's the, the hypothesis on alternative two is to say, yes, you can accommodate all this if you use all of these density increases. If you use some of them, but keep your historic development pattern and need for single family homes, then there's a boundary adjustment on the UGA and do some balance of the two.
So as I commented when I, and I, sorry, I feel like my response to the survey was inadequate, but I was bothered by the fact that I didn't see any alongside the density increases or infill changes being contemplated in the alternative one. I didn't see any assumptions about transportation infrastructure or levels of service, water levels of service.
Right.
Anything like that in, in any of the areas. And so, and knowing that those are problems in North Metro and West Plains. I know that there's transportation infrastructure, level of service issues. And Moran Prairie, certainly in West Plains, LaTox Creek going into West Plains.
That's exactly right.
A lot, a lot of those. I think North Metro is probably the best situated for transportation, but I couldn't swear to it. I always kind of like try to find my way when I'm up there, but and transit.
Your observations are right.
Looking forward to seeing whomever's coming from STA.
There, there's a very simple argument for why you're not seeing that now. And that is, we can't study everything on the entire continuum of both alternatives until we narrow that down a little bit. But one of the things as alternative, and we're coming to you for alternative one, really at that touch point of saying, you know, is, is density good or is it bad or something in between? Once we get a little bit more, then everybody's teed up for transportation analysis, schools analysis, fire districts, you know, water and sewer, all of the capital facilities and concurrency requirements will start to come into this. So we haven't done it now because we're starting with the, now, you know, well, again, what's, what's the, what's the study area? Well, now it's these study areas with this kind of density. What does that look like for transportation? And then the other alternative, we'll get a not a 50,000 look, but maybe a 10,000 foot look at, at the very basics of those. As the board then narrows this down through the draft EIS in December, there'll be a preferred alternative that will come out and that will get the most, the full detailed study in the DEIS and on what those are. Comes back for more study and then the final EIS will have all those numbers and can say we can make this happen or we can make part of that happen. We have to go in a different direction because we can't afford the roads or we can't afford the sewer or the school district can't handle development. So it's all there. We're just starting at this point.
I, I can, I can see that. I mean, I guess it's kind of at the point where it's like, well, what's the appetite for this? Can we? What's the public think? I would just hate to see it get to the point where it's like, well, we can't do it. But I mean, that happens. That's what the EIS is for.
Right. Right. Yeah, that in a sense, the one overarching question before the commission is what are your thoughts about accommodating 24,000 dwelling units in higher density development? Nothing more low dense than six units an acre.
Well, my thought is, first of all, that I'm, I'm glad to see that it is possible that, that we can use the land we have to potentially meet the, the requirements, just like on a very, just at an analytical base, like we could possibly do it. But I don't think that means we should do it that way. But I think it is promising to know that it's possible to use the land we have and change the regs to meet our, our goal. But I don't think that that is just like, means we should just go down that path because we can do it. I think there needs to be more analysis there and if it's the right thing to do. And also I think the big question is again, like, do the conditions allow for it and will the market select for it? Like a bunch of the options we looked at today requires some pretty creative development that hasn't happened a whole bunch in Spokane. I'm not saying it won't happen, but I can't think off the top of my head of a housing complex that went in a parking lot where there was a, a supermarket behind it. I can see how it could happen, but in Spokane, I can't think of an example of that occurring. And so, yeah, I think that we probably need a blend of the options is my early thought, that that's like going to be the preferred alternative is to somehow blend these things. Because when is it not? But yeah, that's, those are my early thoughts. I'm excited to see it's possible, but I think we need to continue walking and understand the other alternative and see if it's possible to, to sort of put them together.
How can, how can we expand and incorporate a little bit more land, like on the north side, going out towards more like Bruce Road? I mean, the traffic out there and going up to Mount Spokane High School, there's a lot of ground out there. One side we could preserve all the farmland, but where Mount Spokane High School is out towards Mead, I mean, how can we incorporate some of that a little bit more?
A good question. One of the smaller area studies that you'll be seeing in the somewhat near future is that area specifically. That area around Day Mount Spokane Road, Newport Highway, the, the new north forty going in there, the Yolks Grocery Store. That area is a lammard. It's a leftover, I'd say leftover, it was, it was never included in an urban growth area when GMA was laid over the map. We are studying that with commerce as to whether or not that should become an urban growth area in this cycle or whether we should, we should look at it in a different way. You know, in, in the future sometime. We don't have a, a recommendation yet. But it changes how it could develop. One thing we heard in our two sessions on the north side at Mead High School and, and some of it, you know, fairly typical, but it was very much, we don't want any new growth out here. We like what we've got. We like the densities we've got. We don't want any more. And while, you know, we, we certainly understand that the GMA pushes us into using the land we have more efficiently. And so we have to balance those needs. And, and yeah, it's a, it's a good area for study.
Well, I mean, we, we keep going up with the land that we have, such as the Farwell Road and everything. I mean, I got personally two boys that go to Farwell Elementary and, you know, I, I like the apartments. I like the gross, but pulling in and out, getting my kids delivered to school. You know, there's more people going. So I mean, I'm, I'm all for expanding out, what we can incorporate.
Understood.
You know, the, the tight areas on what we have to build with and, you know, sometimes can make job sites a little bit more dangerous, especially when you're building in town or near more stores or anything like that. Keeping going up. I mean, that's a good thing, but man, going out could be a good thing too.
Appreciate that.
NEPDA, the Northeast Public Development Authority spent half a million dollars in two and a half years developing a master plan for what they call the development of the yard. They presented that master plan yesterday to the City of Spokane Planning Commission. It's 159 pages before you get to the appendices. I spent Monday reading the plan to be able to testify before the City Planning Commission yesterday. There's a few things I want to share. Number one, it, it costs a half a million dollars. It took two and a half years. But it, 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 it took, pulled the curtain up on what can happen. And it visually and in word conveyed what could happen. Now there's some things that need to be understood. Now there's some things that need to be understood. First of all, it was in Hilliard. And for those of you that don't know, when you make a land use application in Hilliard, your neighborhood support it. They don't line up to stop it. Secondly, it was, it was an eye opener, I think, to both the city plan commission and to me that we have both discovered that neither one of us have horns. We're not devils. And, and a, as I look here at what we're doing, I, I think we have a vision of each other as having horns and being a little bit devilish. And we need to meet. And I, and I'm just, the thought just, it made sense to me that as we get into, is there an appropriate time or maybe it's already in your plan? That I'd like to know what the city's planning on for their infill stuff. We're in the dark. I am in the dark anyway. Secondly, from, from an efficiency standpoint, could, could the staff find, or maybe you already have them examples of before and after of these infill? I, I have a hard time looking at all this stuff that, that we've been talking about, particularly on the north side. And I'm trying to figure out how the hell is Scott going to people to turn that into a, an urban wonderful place to live with parks and, and so if there were some before and afters, I think that would be really beneficial.
Okay.
But anyway, those are, it was, it was a very fulfilling day. And I guess you got to kind of be a planning nerd to think of it that way, but.
No, I understand completely, Pete. And we'll, we can do, we'll have a lot more illustrative and photographic stuff going forward that can show some before and afters, like we've talked about some of the examples we've talked about. And, and, and yeah, we'll, we'll also be in the final plan. We intend that to be almost overly simplified, more pictures and illustrations than words. We want to be able to show people, this is what a neighborhood zone looks like. This is what a mixed use project looks like. And then the development regs, you know, the various zones that implement that will have the parameters that you saw on the screen. But, but yeah, we, we want to be more illustrative as we do this because it's easier for people to understand. Yeah. Thank you.
I, one comment. I've listened to all this and, and I'm very much so involved myself in looking at, and the word has not been used yet this morning, affordable. We have all had the pleasure as parents, grandparents and everything else and to have a home. And right now what we're dealing with is that we need to be looking for the future and we are, have been given that, that measure to handle it. We have got to find a way to have affordable housing. And I don't know where you want to put that word on figures. But boy, I'll tell you, it is ramping up affordability is, is almost out of reach right now.
Being able to subdivide more land and breaking it down and having more parcels to be able to build single family structures is what's going to get the cost of land down right now. Getting rid of the ten acre, the five acre headaches when it comes to doing that. And if you want to build a little planning, a little division or whatnot, that's what's going to be able to get the cost of lots down. We got to be able to break up land a little bit more to make it more affordable. And we have to get the thumb of, off the builders and, and stuff of these regulations, which not necessarily the county, the county has its own red flags. But also being dictated by the state on how to build, especially when we are in a different climate and zone area than what the west side is. So when it comes to these regulations and how we are dictated to build it, it makes nothing affordable, Clyde. I mean, it just doesn't.
We, we are very aware of that and we're struggling with how to, how to even hold the conversation. You know, we, we've talked about densities here. You saw earlier in the year, Tate was talking about the HAP tool from Commerce that breaks these down into these allocations by income band. And then aside that to a housing structure type. And only the hundred and twenty AMI and up were in single family. Everything else was in attached or multifamily housing. Is, is that a fair solution to say the only housing that you're ever going to get is in multifamily? Cause that's the only thing that can be built to that level. And those are going to be rentals. You're not going to do anything to encourage homeownership at that, at that point. We are aware of that. And one of the reasons you, you know, maybe it didn't stand out in those development assumption slides. In almost every case, we're suggesting getting rid of minimum lot sizes. So we don't have a four thousand square foot minimum or a twenty five hundred or a sixteen hundred foot minimum. Let's see if we can, you know, let's see what the builders and architects can come up with if they don't have to have a minimum lot size or, or minimum setbacks other than those for, you know, health and safety, fire code setbacks, for example. And so the, the idea is, is can we, can we write a code that offers a developer, you know, where Habitat for Humanity, for example, a chance to build a product that can in fact be owned by someone in the, say fifty to eighty percent or eighty percent AMI bracket. You know, that would be a big start if we could, if we could bite off that particular piece. Another constraint that we're studying, City of Mercer Island completed their comprehensive plan a little while ago, submitted it. It was challenged at the growth management hearings board and the hearings board found it to be deficient because they overly simplified again. They, they took their AMI brackets and said, the lower incomes are all going to be in our town center because that's the best place to accommodate them. So they made that sort of policy statement, but they hadn't, and they were challenged because they had no back, the hearings board said, you gave us no reason to think you can actually do this. You didn't identify a funding source to make this happen. You didn't find any tools to make this happen. And so they've, they've sort of upped the ante a little bit. Before it was, put it in a plan and let the market respond. In other words, give the market a chance to build these by removing the barriers to affordable housing. The Mercer Island case now with the hearings board was you have to have a plan to actually get this built. And so in one case, it's challenging us to do the right thing, but it's also made it you know, in order of magnitude more difficult.
Wow, that sounds like the good old days of, well, let's warehouse these people all in this part of town. You know, that's essentially what happened to East Central, especially in probably West Central, too. I mean, like historically, that's one of the ways that we dealt with it. It's like, well, they can't afford anything better. And they can't afford to move on up. So let's keep them here. This is where it's all going to be. I'm all for infill development. I didn't see a whole lot about non-green filled development or looking for those big open spaces that might be there to develop or. But I know, I mean, I live in the city. I have an old house, an old single family house, and I have enough room per new city zoning to scrape it and put a triplex in with design, with design standards. And I'm going, that seems, that seems okay. I mean, I wish they didn't have to be rentals, but maybe I could put in another detached, like tiny home, single family dwelling unit on my little four thousand six hundred square foot lot. And it's small in the scheme of things, but there's a lot of large lots in the valley or in, in county, even in outside of the urban areas, in the urban areas. There's plenty of room on some of these lots to put in another dwelling unit. Sometimes even two, depending on what the zoning ends up being. So I don't think that we should discount the existing land that we have. It's kind of like living within your land budget. This is what you got. Can't overspend it because it'll be gone.
The, and we, we agree with the vast majority of that. The challenge though is there's an independent market that we can't control, don't control, shouldn't control. That is going to say, what is it that I want to live in if I'm moving to Spokane? And over the last ten plus years as we studied it, it is largely a single family detached lots with, with a yard and a fence. And that, so you know, that product is desirable and sought out by people that want to live here. If we, if we don't have that available, then, you know, two things happen. One, people, some will adapt, to be sure. Others, we've got the pressures of Kootenay County. We, we have a neighboring jurisdiction that's within our traffic shed that has a vastly different set of rules for development. And we've got to be cognizant of that fact. We can't just ignore them. Now, you know, is there, is there significant development pressure? You know, the realtors would say absolutely. Others would say it's not as bad as it seems, but it's there. It's there. And so we, we have to reflect the fact that, that we have to adapt the GMA in a way that does fit the market in Spokane while trying to use our land budget as wisely as we can. The, the one example we, we try to, we do use in, in even speaking with our, you know, colleagues Spencer and Steve at the city is, you know, GMA, or at least the, the GMA that is supported by Futurewise and others supports an infill model, clearly an infill model. If that was really viable in Spokane, you'd see it downtown. You would see pressure on those parking lots. You'd see pressure on building conversions. You'd see the opportunity to have urban living downtown. The, you know, Larry Stone's project is the first mall, first downtown project in years to come up. So it seems clear that the market isn't really responding and saying, yeah, we, we all want to be downtown and we want to be on the Skyway system. So we, we have to react to that. We, we can't force people into that market. As desirable as it is to planners and as efficient as it is for public services.
The one element that we haven't talked about, and I don't know how we deal with this. And I know that one other member of this planning commission has expressed to me his concern. And that is time to building permit, time to get to building permit. I've, I've complained and whined about how the costs to get a permit have gone up, but none of us have ever talked about the carrying costs. And, and if you deal with our bureaucracy as a builder or a developer, it's, will I ever get my permit? Will I ever get to the market that I'm competing in? And if we don't deal with time, we're, we're, we're not solving any problems.
Pete, we totally agree. Jordan has been working on, you know, system improvements on the building side itself. We are continuing to do that with the land use side. You know, our, our parameter now is that if we receive a fully complete and accepted application, we will have that ready for a public here for the hearing examiner in ninety days or less. That assumes that the applicant and developer is prepared, has, has done good quality work and drawings. And that there's only one set of revisions, you know, a trade off back and forth one time. If there's, if there's more of that, it simply changes the clock. Building permits, the, the goal some years ago was to have commercial building permits in ninety days or less and residential permits in twenty one or less. I know Jordan's working on, on trying to get to those levels. We are also being charged by our CEO to create a dashboard of our permitting system. So that you and others can look in, on our web and say, essentially it's like, how much, how long do you have to wait in the TSA line at the airport? Well, here's the dashboard. Building permits are taking seven days for this, or they're taking fourteen days for that. We're, we're hopeful that we can have that software and stuff installed over these last, those last quarter and have that display up in early twenty six for our permitting side. I agree with you. You know, it's, it's, it's one thing to have the plan and the zone, but yes, you have to have a path to a permit that is predictable and timely.
This is important. Yeah. There's two sides or two parts of that. In my world as a developer, I've got to get nine departments to approve my plans for me to file a plat. And there's no accountability in either the city or the county to get all nine of those people to come in one time and review it and be able to go on to the next step. And it, it, by the time we get through that process, laws have changed. I mean, it's, it's, it's decades. It's generational.
And one, those are issues that we just have to deal with. One, one thing we are working on is reshaping what we call the pre-application process. And now when some, for land, you know, it doesn't always, building permits handle things differently, but from the land action or project action, the intent is, yeah, let's get all nine departments in the room at the same time to hear about the project from the very beginning and point out, okay, here's what you need to do to be prepared to submit your application. That alone will speed things up because it'll all happen in, in one report. We're fragmented, you know, we're, we're not a unified planning and development department. So there will always be some separation between planning, land use, public works, building, health district, among others. The best we can do is if we've, if we have a solid pre-application process and we can move something through is to have good cooperation among the, the county professional staff so that something doesn't sit on the desk for two weeks where it could be going on a parallel path somewhere else. It doesn't have to go sequentially through a process. I, I agree with you. Mr. Chairman, that's.
Is anybody online? Is there anybody online with their hand up? Uh, without objection. Oh. For this, come forward. This is for the EIS. Jeff Daniels?
Yes, sir.
Yes, got it. So that was Ms. McQ.
Yes, good morning. My name is Jeff Daniels.
Yes, Jeff.
Thank you very much. I have a very brief question for Mr. Chesney. I think it's a, a important clarifying question. I'm curious if the twenty four to twenty five thousand additional housing units is inclusive of the twenty two thousand four hundred housing unit target that the city has. Is that in addition to or outside of? Okay. Thank you very much.
That's it. Okay. No one online?
Scott, to that point, can you remind us what the county total was? If you have, if you remember that off the, or at least roughly.
County total is, is roughly that twenty four thousand.
Okay.
Cities is about twenty three and.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. No, the total, county to, county total with all municipalities and unincorporated county. What was that number?
About a hundred and five thousand persons and I think of forty, forty six or forty seven thousand potential units.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Hard to translate population to actual units because of household sizes and that, but that's the benchmark.
Excuse me. Jeff, could you please introduce yourself and tell you, tell us who you're with? Or what you're, you know, if you're just a public or resident or?
I'm in your district, District Three. We live on Argon. And I'm not going to say I'm representing a coalition of other homeowners yet because we're building the coalition still. But we're in the process of requesting the inclusion of six homeowner, up to six homeowners that's up to fifty acres on our. Is on the card, it's five, five, two, four, North Argon.
I've got it right here. Yeah. So of record. Thank you. Does that, good for you?
I feel bad because I didn't get his email. Apparently it got emailed out to everybody, but I just didn't, what he said. And so I just, it'd be up to speed.
That's you.
However, I can tell.
Anyone else? Yeah.
Logan asked about the housing unit amount that the county has to plan for. According to HAP, which is the tool that everybody plans for, it's seventy five thousand one hundred and eighty four units countywide. And then that's distributed among the municipalities and us. But I just wanted to.
And what's the population number?
Population. So I don't have that on HAP. It's about, that's about a hundred, a hundred thousand mark, but the unit amount that that translates to is the seventy five thousand.
It's basically like one and a quarter, one point three, or somewhere in that range that we're assuming household size overall.
That's what the HAPs uses. Yeah, the HAP uses its own set assumed household size. That's why it isn't a perfect tool because every place has a different household number, but for that calculation assumption, yes.
Is that based on the next twenty years?
Yes, twenty years.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I think that somebody else in the audience who came in late had a yellow slip, but just maybe wasn't able to get it up to you.
Anybody else?
Nope.
We do have another, we do have another slip here, Eric Low, but that's for the next topic for the.
This is all, this is the topic. It's all wrapped together.
The UGA as well? Oh, okay. You know, can I just make a cogent comment here? This chairman would like to take a recess for five minutes without objection. Could we do that? We've been at this for two hours and we've gotten a lot of good information in front of everyone. Can we take a short one? A short one? Thank you. Five minutes. Thank you.
That's nature. That's the rule of how this goes.
Yeah, that's the universe of law.
I'm sure she did. She was doing that longer. So when we were here, she probably was a separate, a transpond. Uh, it even. Also, when you're under pressure, it's not help. We've been in many situations where it will be possible. You have to figure it out right then.
I really appreciate.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, with this presentation, will we, will we be able to get it offline and will be posted? And the website is just. Okay.
There's, there's always a.
Okay.
That you should be able to put that. Um, if you want, if you want, the web. I'm giving my email.
Okay.
And then I can send it back to.
Oh, that'd be great. A lot of information presented here, so anyway, I appreciate being able to review some of those slides and stuff. All right.
Okay. Luckily, you might remember that person upstairs. She's our, one of our new service.
Yeah, that would make sense. It's state or county.
Okay, let's get this going.
Yeah.
Let's reconvene, please. We left off with Mr. Low. Would you please give us your presentation, please? UGA discussion is your topic and you've passed something out here for us, right?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for being here.
So I am here on behalf of my mother, Denise Stranahan Beal. My name is Eric Stranahan Low. The Stranahan family has been located in the LeTo Valley for over sixty years. My grandparents started buying land in the nineteen sixties. I've passed out a set, set of documents for your review at your leisure, including the comments for the EIS that we submitted back in May. We submitted our initial request for UGA inclusion over two years ago in twenty twenty-three, March of twenty twenty-three. And I also included a set of aerial maps that shows the pace of development over the last thirty years. And I just wanted to come up and express our commitment to being good partners to the county, good partners to the city. In our development proposal, we, we are really striving to build what Mr. Chesney has discussed at this session and prior sessions, a, a real neighborhood center for the LeTo Valley. I will be back in October. I was hoping that there would be more discussion about alternative two today. But I will be back in October to discuss this further, but I just wanted to present this to you. My phone number and email are on the letter that I provided, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to provide them or answer them. We are currently in the process with our engineering firm and our design firm, which our engineering firm is Storehog Engineering here in Spokane. And then our design firm is Yard and Co., which is based out of Cincinnati. They're a national firm that really focuses on building neighborhoods from the ground up and redeveloping neighborhoods to be more people focused. So that's our goal. Happy to answer any questions here next time. If you have questions that you'd like to email me, I'm happy to answer those as well. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
We've never met before, but I, I know what you're passionate about, Eric. It seems to be like a lot of public transit and things like that. I know you're a frequent STA meeting, board meeting attendee.
I am.
I'm curious. I'm just gonna be frank. I, this proposal surprised me to have your name on it. It's, it, it, to me, just on its surface, looks like sprawl. Can you, I think you did a little bit already to help me understand why it's not sprawl and how it fits with your values. Could you just do that a little bit more for me now and help me understand why, why this proposal fits with your values and why you think it's a good idea? Yeah, how it might lead to less trips in the LeTo Valley.
So the initial proposal that my family put together a year, you know, a number of years ago was for a single family development, and this is a hundred and sixty-six acres in the LeTo Valley. A single family development that would entail about six hundred single family homes. And then as I got more well-versed in urbanist circles and my activism, and also through my education, I'm currently a student at the University of Arizona in their Master in Real Estate Development Program. I've come to learn how, how cities tend to operate and, you know, what really works in terms of finances, but also, you know, for the people themselves. And, you know, you can see from the aerial maps that LeTo Valley has really just been single family sprawl over the last thirty years. And my goal, and I've been very explicit with our consultants, is to be a people-first neighborhood, walkable first, bikeable first, cars are the lowest priority. You know, cars are a necessity in this valley for sure, but our goal is to dedicate space, hopefully for a transit center in the future, other civic services, and really the, this is also accomplishes, our, our hope is to accomplish some of the goals laid out by SRTC in their study from twenty twenty-one, including the frontage road that would connect Eagle Ridge to Hatch Road. So we're really, I'm, I know I'm a little sort of in, in front of this a little bit, but our goal is to be as collaborative and communicative as possible to maximize the returns for the entire valley, not just for ourselves. And, and, and be, be partners for, for the county, for the city, for SRTC, for WashDOT. We, we want to do this right. And I've been very explicit and my mom has given me, you know, the full go-ahead. I'm very lucky to have such a trusting mother. But to the full go-ahead to really do this in what I feel is the, the right way and the right way for everybody.
Sorry to come with a hard question out of the gate, but I really appreciate that explanation and I'm glad to hear that you plan to dedicate spaces for services and transit and things like that. It's critical when you have a big plot like that and you're going to divide it, that those dedications get made. A hundred years ago, our, our developers seemed to really get that and I hope that we can foster that sort of mentality in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else want to step up to the mic for UGA? Anybody online? Don't want to leave anybody out? All right, great. Any further comments on the workshop matters? Now would be the time to do that. Clyde, it looked like you have something on your mind.
I'm fine.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. We will move on. Next order of business would be the minutes from August the fourteenth. Those are in front of you. This was about the Shoreline Master Plan program, which was approved. The amendment was, everyone was read these. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt those minutes of August the fourteenth. Do I hear a motion and a second? To adopt from who? Lonnie? Second?
Second.
Second from Logan? Any discussion on this motion? Any, any, any additions or errors or edits that need to be made to make this looks like a good job to me? I've read them. If not, the chair will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Question, the other question I have.
Yes, Melissa.
I realized at the end of the meeting last time, we said the next meeting was going to be August twenty-eighth, but we didn't have a meeting August twenty-eighth, so this just stays the way it is because that's what the meeting was that.
Said, yeah. Logan, it looked like you have a question. No?
No, I was just laughing. It's funny that you have to like write something. It's right, but it's wrong, but it's right. It's just kind of funny. It's what was said, so it's really right.
So be it. All right. All those in favor of adopting those minutes, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Opposed by saying nay. Those minutes are hereby adopted. Staff report. Who's going to do the staff report? Since Scott has gone off to the state of the county deal. One of you gentlemen want to say something for the record?
Maybe just give us an idea of what to expect, if you know, for our next two meetings.
Yeah, so October second, like Scott said, we were going to discuss alternative two, so we plan to have more details on that and maps prepared of the areas we're looking to study growth into. So be on the lookout for a similar homework packet that you received for this alternative for meeting. And I expect we'll get a lot of the members of the public at that meeting because a lot of people are interested in the growth of the UGA, so. In terms of meetings, oh, sorry.
Question of clarification. Do we not have scheduled a meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Of this, do, do we?
It does not say that we do on our thing.
No, there, no, there. There is no meeting on the twenty-fifth, as I understand it.
That's what I'm trying, there is no meeting now.
No. Thank you for the qualifying that. Appreciate it.
Because that was, was scheduled originally.
Yeah, right.
Besides that, we have virtual open houses that we're going to continue to do. They're the first Wednesday of every month. And the next one will be on October first, and we're going to be talking about the rural lands chapter, so be on the lookout for that as well. Scott already discussed the outreach meetings we're going to have, so I think that is all I have for you.
Rona, you're going to send those meeting dates out for all of us. Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else?
I think that was.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Can I have a clarification on that? You're going to send out a notice to all of us of these general meetings that you're having, what, four or five of them here coming up for the public and their locations?
Those start on the fifteenth, so we got a little bit of time, fifteenth of October.
Right, but I have to plan my schedule ahead of time.
Well, I, well, I don't.
I want to be able to get on your schedule, Clyde. The heck.
Thanks, Logan. I know. All right. So the next meeting will be October the second and the sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Any other comments of the commission that you want to say right now? No? Pete?
I'd like to know who the new girl is.
Hi, I'm Eileen. I will be going in for romance.
I see.
That's good to have.
Lucky you. Welcome, Eileen.
Eileen, is that it?
Have you here? All right.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, if I could have a moment of personal privilege, she's not here anymore, but I do want to apologize to the woman who spoke first today. I was probably a little bristly with her. I, you know, I think that we're all volunteers up here and I think we tried to do our best and it felt like she came kind of with guns a-blazing, but I should have been a little bit more receptive to that. So if you hear me, I'm sorry and we'll apologize next time I see you.
Ms. McHugh, you're talking about?
Yeah, Ms. McHugh, sorry. Ms. McHugh, thank you.
So noted for the record. Thank you, Logan. That was nice of you. Chair, if there's no other business going before, Chair wants to have a motion to adjourn. By my Pete?
Second.
Second by who? By Logan? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Opposed by saying nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. It's eleven fourteen. Thanks, Rona. Thanks, Eileen. Thanks, everybody. Thank you. This almost became a.